Okay, at six o'clock, I'll call meeting to order. I invite Pastor Harry Irwin. Can I have the indication? Welcome. Thank you.
Let's pray together. God, I just thank you that you're a good God. And I thank you, Father God, for these that are here today. I just pray, Father God, that you'd bless them and their families. I just thank you for these council members, God. I just pray that as they lead and as they make decisions, I pray, Father God, that you would give them wisdom, give them guidance, Father God, that they would make right decisions. I pray, Father God, that the decisions that they make would be honoring and glorifying to you and also for the betterment of our city. I do thank you for our city and I thank you for those that are here. I just pray, Father God, that you would bless our city. I pray, Father God, for those that are victims of the recent shooting. I just pray, Father God, that you would comfort those families, that you would comfort those people that were injured. I just pray, Father God, that you would heal them and give them strength. God, I just want to finally thank you for Jesus and thank you for the sacrifice that he made on the cross for us. And I thank you for the life that he gives as a result of our faith in him. And I just pray, Father God, that we would see an amazing revival in this city as a result of what you've done. Again, I thank you for this time and I pray that you bless it. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Irwin. Councilmember Willis.
Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Finally, at this time, I would ask Alma Angeles with our Kipo Odessa Beautiful if you'd come up and recognize, I think, what we've got up here, which is so pretty, so neat. Anyway, I turn it over to you.
Good evening. My name is Alma Angeles and I'm with Kipo Odessa Beautiful. And this evening, we would like to recognize a citizen of Midland. Her name is Kat Wood. And she did a beautiful mural for us at HHW located 816 West Forty Second. She donated her time, her talent, to create this for all of us to enjoy. She's a recent UTPB graduate. She's also worked with the Hispanic Art Association for the past three years and Odessa Arch for the past year. And we're so thankful for people like her who help out our community and our organization. Kat, if you could please come forward and just tell us what your inspiration was for the mural?
Hello. Good afternoon. So, I felt really impressed to focus on this for the recycling center. Is the mic on? I feel like with the arts, the idea and what you're intending for the public gets kind of lost. And so I could just really relate to recycling. Like, you want to make an impact and change and a difference for the better. And my inspiration behind it, style-wise, also, I wanted to bring something to Odessa that kind of just represented something different. I felt like it needed something more hip, cultural, urban, something that grabs people's attention for recycling because it's really, I was struggling at first. And then it just kind of came to me, the idea. And I was like, of course, design, the phoenix. And I picked the phoenix because it's rising from the ashes and becoming better from your predecessor, basically. And that's the whole concept of recycling. And it can play into many roles of our lives. And so, just like remaking yourself and becoming better, that's what I felt worked best with recycling. And...
I think that's great.
It's beautiful.
That is very good.
It is very beautiful.
Before we get into the consent agenda, I'd like to recognize Justice Keith Stretcher. Is he in the audience? Stand, please. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Glad to be here. Glad to be here.
Please, please.
My name's Keith Stretcher. My name's Keith Stretcher, 5000 Chapel Hill Drive, Midland, Texas. I'm a justice on the Texas Eleventh Court of Appeals. I was the city attorney of Midland for 24 years. And I just came over tonight to see one of my best, if not the best, Assistant City Attorneys, Natasha Brooks, in her new position as City Attorney for the City of Odessa. I can tell you without any hesitation, you could not have made a better choice. Ms. Brooks is excellent, knows the law, treats everybody the same, treats everybody fairly, and just an excellent person and an excellent attorney. And I just cannot brag on her anymore. And Natasha, it is so, I am so proud to see you on the dais up there. You just, and it really makes me proud.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. All right, consent agenda. We need a motion to remove item D from consent.
So moved.
The motion, we have second. We'll move that to item one under the other council action. We have a motion for the consent agenda as such.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, consent agenda is approved. We're going to other council action, which is to consider an extension of the Ector County Utility District ECUD Water Supply Contract Resolution. Mr. Curf, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Council. The current water supply contract with the Ector County Utility District is a five-year contract which expires at the end of this month. We have been in negotiations. We are not quite ready to call the negotiations done, I don't believe. And so, the city staff is offering for the extension of your consideration in extending the contract for two more months and allowing the Ector County Utility District more time to review the city's proposals and for us to negotiate further on an agreement that will be beneficial to both parties.
Any questions to Mr. Curf?
I believe Mr.
We have Mr. Fowler here who represents ECUD. As Tommy, if you'd like to stand up here with him, that'd be fine, too.
I was about to talk.
Okay.
I was going to reintroduce to him and say, go for it.
Mr. Fowler.
My name is Bill Fowler. I'm an attorney in Odessa and I represent Ector County Utility District. The district has been a water customer since, I believe, first deliveries were in 1976. We're in a transition. We're going on our own, be it standalone municipal utility district. So, the contracts that we are working on are for the future. The most important one is a water supply contract where we continue to buy water. Contracts are difficult and it takes time. And so, we do support the, are extending to the parties the opportunity to continue on. We would recommend that we have an interim rate, a reduction in the existing rates, and then a, what I think CPA's call a true-up provision, that once you get to the end and you come to a final rate, then you're able to say, this rate goes back to October the 1st. So, it's just a credit or a debit in a billing to clean it up. We would recommend that, what did I say? What did I tell you guys?
Six ninety-two.
I'm sorry, what?
Six ninety-two.
Okay, it was six ninety-two.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Fowler, who is up here, or Mr. Irwin? Okay, thank you both so much for all your hard work on ECUD. Very much so. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we need to consider an extension of the ECUD Water Supply Contract. Extend the contract for two more months. Do we have a motion to extend it for two more months? And at what rate? And as a true-up period?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
They didn't actually establish a rate. They said that it was within a range, correct?
No, the rate that was mentioned by them was the six ninety-two.
It is an established rate. They're just suggesting that they use that, anticipating that the new established rate will be less than what they've been paying now. So, they wanted to work with that, knowing that it would be true-up to whatever.
Do we have a motion in regards to extending for two months and at the rate that we are currently at, which is eight dollars and seven cents, if I recall?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank y'all so much. In the next sixty days, we will be able to move forward at whatever that appealed rate is. Thank y'all so much for being here. Appreciate it. All right, number two, consider the, excuse me, consider the fifth amended bylaws of the Downtown Odessa Inc., Board of Directors, Mr. Carroll.
Thanks so much, Mayor Protem, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'll try and take up as little time as possible. So, this is the fifth amended bylaws of the Downtown Odessa Incorporated Board. They met on September 18th and approved these fifth amended versions. You have two versions there in front of you. You have one redlined version, which shows the changes that we made. And then underneath that, you also have a clean version. The things that were changed, the biggest substantive changes in these are going to be that we added into section 1.1, the five core purposes of the DOI board moving forward, as well as reducing the number of board members to nine. And that would be seven appointed by the council, as well as two council members. We also added in, I believe, and that was in section... That's going to be section 2.8. We added in the standards of conduct as well. And so, that will be completely fleshed out for each board member. But those are the biggest substantive changes that occurred. Otherwise, we went in and we moved them around. They were just easier to read. And this is here for you to view and any comments you may have after reading them.
Any questions from the council? Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Number two, consider, excuse me, that's not number two, it's number three, but I'll keep going anyway. Consider the acceptance of a check in the amount of $449,888 and a penny issued by the Odessa Industrial Development Corporation to the Odessa Development Corporation in satisfaction of the sale and transfer of the Pinhole site. Mrs. Muncy.
Yes. This agenda item has to do with an incentive agreement that was done between ODC and Summit Power Group back in 2010. And at that time, they bought some land from OIDC in order to put into this incentive grant for $480,000. Summit has filed bankruptcy. That happened in 2017. And the bankruptcy is closing down. I think it's actually completed. They haven't released the other amount yet, the five million, but that should be in the works within the next thirty to sixty days. But they have released the land back to OIDC. And they are proposing to pay us the amount of the 480 originally, less cost that they incurred with legal fees during the bankruptcy proceeding and the portion of permanently plugging a well that has been on that land site. So, they presented a check to the ODC Board for $449,888-01, and the board accepted that check. And so, I am here to ask council to approve the board's action in accepting that check.
Any questions from Mrs. Muncy? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Muncy. Ms. Brooks, consider accepting the status report on all industrial district agreements. Are we doing that one?
Yes.
Expiring on December 31st, 2019, and December 31st, 2020, and approving renewals of the ID industrial district agreements for a seven-year renewal term, and authorizing city manager to sign all needed documents with the following current owners: GE Oil and Gas Compression Systems, LLC, Mueller, Inc., Novusota Odessa Energy LLC, JT F Enterprises LLC, Ward Equipment, Huckabee Industries, Inc., Elliott Partners, AZ Industrial Group, Permian Basin Materials, SWB, Dover Resources, RDB Commercial Properties. Ms. Brooks.
Mayor Protem, City Council, this agenda item is for the approval of renewals of industrial district agreements for a seven-year renewal term and authorizing the city manager to sign all needed documents. Four landowners want to renew their industrial district agreements, one in 2019 and the other three in 2020. There are eight properties owners whose contract expired December 2020 that are still undecided as to whether or not they will request renewal of the industrial district agreements. So, what we're asking today is, we're requesting the renewal of the industrial district agreements. And if the other ones that come up in 2020, the other eight, were requesting, if they request renewal, legal is asking the city council to authorize legal to negotiate those agreements and authorize the city manager to execute those agreements.
Any questions from Ms. Brooks?
Are these, I know last year, a lot of these came up. Are these on the renewals, are they becoming more conforming in that each, they're all similar instead of having a hundred different?
And yes, and that's our goal in bringing these to you right now. All of our industrial district agreements are becoming unified. And that's why we've already done the 2020s. And that's where we are. And that's why we're just requesting council to authorize us to negotiate and the city manager to sign them. So, yes, they're...
Were there any of these that were particularly different or had special provisions? I mean, when we say we're authorizing you to negotiate, are they, are there people out there that are upset because their agreement is different? Or where are we on that?
The ones that have already agreed, the four?
Uh huh.
No, no one's upset. We're still working with the ones, the eight. And some of them won't agree to an industrial district agreement. Their term may expire. Some may want to be annexed. And so, what we're finding is a lot of people are not wanting to agree to the industrial district agreements anymore. And so, what we're doing is we're just allowing either their term to expire, whatever they wish, enter into the water agreement, just whatever they want to do.
Okay. So, what you're asking is to authorize our city manager to negotiate these?
We're going to legal to negotiate and the city manager to execute them.
And so, we won't see those agreements?
No, not unless you want to and that you can determine today.
My question would be, if they are to be annexed, does it still go through the same process?
It's going to go through, it's going to go through planning.
Okay.
And the ones that we've had already go through planning, I think we've had really good success with that. And I would really encourage the city council to read that agenda item. It really, I didn't want to read the whole thing to you today, but it really explains our industrial district agreement process. On the back page, it even gives you the background and the history of it. So, I think that's one you want to file and be able to review.
So, there's eight that are in consideration?
Yes, for 2020.
And how many of them are thinking about annexation?
We don't know. Some we're able to get a hold of, some we cannot find. And so, with those that we cannot find, we're just going to let their industrial district agreements expire. They don't have any services through the city.
If I may comment, I would somewhat like to see them as they occur.
Okay.
If it was something in 2019, since we've changed it up with Mr. Remley and now the P&amp;Z Committee looking at it, I'd kind of like to keep that process going and then look at 2020, when those come in. That would be what I would...
Now, this is just for the industrial district?
Right, right. But still, I think as they come up, I think it would be beneficial to entertainment.
Is that to say that on all industrial district agreements, you want those brought?
You want those brought before the council?
Well, my question was, I thought some of them may still do not know if they want to be in an industrial district or if they want to be annexed.
Right. And those would come to, the annex definitely would come to you. This is just for those that agree to the industrial district agreements. Anything that's not agreed to, we would bring to council anyway.
I know when we first were elected, that was, there were a lot of people here for several council members at meetings that were concerned about their industrial agreements. So, I think we got a little nervous about those. I would agree with Dewey. I'd like to know them as they come up.
Okay.
So, should we table this item or should we go ahead and proceed as we had mentioned about what's council's thoughts?
We could go ahead and approve the one on 2019 and the four that have already agreed on 2020, couldn't we? If they're all in agreement with that?
That would be good.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the one plus the four, I guess we could say, and then 2020 to be looked at as they come about?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second.
So moved.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Brooks.
And just to clarify, there was only four agreements, one in 2019, three in 2020.
Okay, so the four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to open up a public hearing to consider approval of the request by LOA Land Development LLC owner and Maverick Engineering Agent for original zoning of single-family four on approximately 28.3 acres, a single-family four. Mr. Remley?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, good evening. The property involved in this request is located east of the intersection of Mission Drive and San Sabat Drive. This site is currently designated future development. It is vacant. Land use in the area consists of residential development, which is single-family residential development. There is the Mission Golf Course or Odessa Country Club Links Course and vacant land. The property owner and the applicant in the case is LOA Land Development. Maverick Engineering is the agent. And the purpose of these zoning requests would create 160 single-family residential lots. These lots will range in size from 5,000 square feet all the way up to 9,000 square feet. And also, one surface drainage area that is approximately 1.8 acres. This area is located in the eastern side of the City of Odessa's future land use map. This area is near the Mission Dorado area. This is generally considered one of the primaries for new residential growth in the city. The proposed land use for this area is consistent with the identified city priority of vibrant new neighborhoods and a diverse range of housing. The proposed development is intended to be a quality new neighborhood that will maintain its long-term value through attention to design and neighborhood amenities. And the planning staff has requested and worked with the developers to consider development of a walking trail around and through the planned surface drainage area, and they are considering this. It's not a done deal yet, but they are considering that. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to these requests, and the planning staff does concur with the recommendations for approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for council?
I do. On the note, the one card that was returned, I guess, the complaint talked about that they had a safety concern, that they have only one way out of their residence and people are driving through our yards daily to find an outlet. Any input on that? I mean, I'm looking at, will this development?
Philip, address that.
I kind of remember why. What we did see at that area, there is utility construction that's taking place in that area. And what it seemed, and when we visited with folks in that area, is that those barriers were keeping that traffic from flowing in that area. So, they were jumping this individual's yard to do that. So, we did work with the barricade company, and they have extended their barricades out. So, that issue should be resolved and hopefully no one approaches in their yard.
Yeah, so really, the complaint wasn't even related to the development, it was more the utility construction.
To the utilities, okay.
And that's, we had asked Philip last time to talk to that person so he wouldn't hate the developer for the rest of his life.
Thank you, Philip.
Thanks.
Any other questions of Mr. Remley? Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing none? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Remley.
Thank you, sir.
Consider amending the Odessa City Code, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Article 1-7, Boards, Commissions, Committees. Mr. Carroll?
Good evening again, Mayor Protem, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. We're coming back in conjunction with the adjustment of these DOI bylaws. The other thing we're going to want to do is consider the amendment of this part of the ordinances simply to, it used to say between 15 and 21 members on this board. Now, in conjunction with the reduction in that number to nine, this will simply reflect that we are now having nine board members instead of between 15 and 21.
Any questions for Mr. Carroll? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Consider amending Chapter 4, Business Regulations, Article 4-10, Taxi Cabs, Section 4-1040, Operation Requirements. Mr. Jones?
Mayor Protem, council members, how are y'all doing tonight?
Good.
Thank you.
I am, we're going to discuss tonight, very briefly, just the taxicabs. What we have is, that's currently in our regulations of taxicabs and limo services. They're quite complicated. What we're seeing is that Lyft and Uber are basically putting them out of business because our law requires, our ordinance requires them to have five during a month. Well, there's, we have two remaining right now, taxicab franchises. And the first one is down from four to two. And then the second one is down from eight to four. So, what we're looking at, we need to do is amend this ordinance so that it allows one, a minimum one, per month. And that's what we're asking you to do tonight.
Questions from council?
What was the intent originally to require five?
Councilmember, I'm not for sure. I'd guess it was probably written years ago whenever there were nothing but taxicabs, you know, the Mid-Odessa, things of that nature, before Lyft and Uber came along. Now, Lyft and Uber, basically, they dominate everything as far as getting, you know, getting a ride from here to there in the city. So, I would assume that back then, that when it was enacted, that there were plenty of folks that drove taxicabs. You know, there was a lot, there was a need for five or more. Not anymore. Times have changed. And this ordinance, what it's doing is basically making sure that the City of Odessa stays up to date with the times because they are changing. So, that's what we're asking you to do.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones?
Only other question I'd have, this is the only part of that regulation that's changing all the other requirements are still. Everything else is still the same. All we're asking them to do is, those taxicab companies, those two that are remaining, and there used to be a whole lot more, about six or seven, I believe, if I'm correct. And it's asking them, everything is still the same. But instead of requiring them to have five and run a whole fleet of them, we're going to allow them to run at least one per month.
Which puts them a little more competitive with Lyft and Uber if they just have one?
It is. And that's the thing, Lyft and Uber, they're just basically putting them out of business. There's nothing that these taxicab companies can really do to fight that at five. But at one, at least they can run two or three cars, one, two, three cars, and at least make a living doing it, and at least employ someone.
And we do have both Lyft and Uber operating in Odessa now?
We do.
Wow.
And they're everywhere.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, sir. They're everywhere.
Yeah.
Lyft and Uber.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Consider levying the tax for the 2020 tax year. Mrs. Muncy?
We are to the final thing on the tax rate. This is the second approval of the ordinance to levy the tax rate for the fiscal year 1920 at 47.6601 cents per $100 property valuation. This tax rate is the same as the current tax rate in the year we're in now, but it is higher... higher than the effective tax rate. The effective tax rate is 39.4648 cents, and this represents a difference of 8.1953 cents, which is 20.77% different. We held our public hearing, public tax hearings on August the 27th and September the 10th. We ratified the increase in tax revenue on September the 10th. All of our exemptions stayed in place as they have been in the prior years, and we had a total taxable value of $10 billion 113,172,830. And I need a motion to pass this ordinance, please.
Any questions for Mrs. Muncy? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Yep.
I move that the property tax rate be increased over the effective tax rate by the adoption of a tax rate of 47.6601 cents, which is effectively a 20.77% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Mrs. Muncy.
Second.
Do we have a second? Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have required language for the motion, that's why we.
You did a very good job, man.
It's according to the tax code, so yes, thank you.
Glad you knew that.
I oppose, actually. I need you to put that for the record, thank you.
Number eight, needs to be tabled, from what I understand, we have a motion to table it?
So moved.
A second? Second to table it?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number nine, before we consider it, needs to be removed from the table first?
So moved.
Motion removed from the table, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Consider amending Chapter 1 of the city of Odessa Code of Ordinances entitled General Provisions, Article 1 through 4, City Council by Amy, Division 3, Code of Conduct, Sections 1-4-51 through 1-4-54, to update the C's Ethics and Code of Conduct ordinance. I know we've had numerous times of discussion on this particular topic. Any discussion from council now? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Consider approving a funding agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation, ODC, and the Texas Department of Transportation for a highway improvements project at the intersection of Interstate 20 and Fodry Road in Midland County. Mr. Feldman?
Good evening. So before you is a funding agreement between ODC and TechDOT for a future overpass at Interstate 20 and Fodry. It's for $2 million, and TechDOT can use these funds as, at any part of the project they see fit. And ODC approved this expenditure at their September 12th, 2019 meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Feldman? Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Feldman. Mrs. Muncy, review and approve the city's investment policy and the approved brokers, dealers, and financial institutions list.
Yes, this agenda item is recommending the approval of the city's investment policy and broker-dealer list. This is a requirement to review this policy every year in accordance with the State of Texas Public Funds Investment Act. There was a couple of changes to the policy that was just clarifying who would review the policy and who would oversee it. All the other changes in this were the same. There has been no changes at the state level in any of the requirements for the Public Funds Investment Act.
Any questions for Mrs. Muncy? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Muncy. Norm, any appointments to boards?
For the emergency communications 911 board, reappoint Chief Mike Gerke.
We need to reappoint Mr. Gerke, Chief Gerke. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any opposed?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I wanted to see that, just in case, you know? Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Have you no comments or citizen comments on non-agenda items? We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank y'all so much.